Start the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Anker?
Yeah.
Mr. Capitao? And Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Mr. Valdez-Valdez-Valdez.
Yeah.
Mr. Pinzón, she's gonna be coming in this late. Uh, Mrs. Shannon?
Yeah.
And Charlie Pollard?
Yeah.
Where you going? Where's your hand? Is your hand on?
Just a little drizzle. No, every little bit of spot.
Um, recession?
Nope.
Hey. Who is it? Hmm. Pursuit to the retirements of the NJSA ten four ten on the puppet, open puppet meeting act. Adequate notice of this meeting of the housing authority of the city of Elizabeth has been given by mail in the January two thousand twelve, scheduled to the newspaper circulate within the county of Union, designated to receive such notice and by posting the two thousand twelve meeting schedule on the housing authority office voting board and further by filing the two thousand twelve meeting schedule and annual meeting date of January third, two thousand thirteen with the office of the city clerk.
Oh, wait, he can sit here all day. There.
No, no, just sit there.
You're, you're, you're a voting member.
I'm sorry everyone for being late. Christina's just tax machine, you had a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I know.
How the session? See, none. Close that. Adoptions for the minutes of the regular meeting, September tenth. Motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Over here. The payment of bills dated October eleventh, two thousand twelve.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Communication.
Uh, communications, there's four of them. Uh, the first one kind of... Uh, it may be few is a little complicated, but actually gives you an idea of, um... Yeah, I gotta kinda back into it and remember, uh, how this housing authority is funded and what is the net impact of this year's HUD audit offset. Uh, based on their original request by the housing authority, um, we would be eligible to receive, you can cover all of it, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight amps, um, six million four hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, however, based on the HUD audit offset, this housing authority's, uh, funding is set at two point three million dollars. Now, the six point four million dollars would be full funding, but you're never gonna get that. So, you know, our funding would, would have been in the range of five point three, five point four million dollars, something like that. Um, but because of our operating reserves, we only can receive the new money, this two point three million, which is actually pro rata down to two point, two point two million. Okay? So, that's basically what we're getting. Uh, the amount that has been previously obligated or the amount that we had been deemed to receive is one point six million, so you subtract the one point six, only two point two million, and we got an amount of money to be forthcoming, complete the fiscal year, at five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Um... So, what happens is that you take the two point two million and you, and you estimate that our expenses should be, uh, five point five million, so we have to use, uh, about three point three million dollars in operating reserve. Um, you know, this, this twelve month period where a housing authority who didn't have that type of operating reserve, their funding level would have been, uh, in the range of five point four million dollars. Uh, and, uh, so, so that's, and, and it, and it really starts to kick in now where there will be no... When we get the money on a monthly basis, where there will be no new money coming, so in order to fill out the fiscal year, we gotta take the money out of them and just invest it. We've talked about this. Why HUD thinks this is a, uh, you know, uh, constitutional illegal way to fund things. Um, they did run it through Congress, Congress approved it, but, you know, it is, uh, actually going to be subject to a lawsuit, it actually is subject to a lawsuit of which... Of which going to the, uh, third correspondence, there's an update on, uh, what offset litigation means. This is our engagement letter, gives you an update, uh, the money that we think we're entitled to if we were to get it, and comes from the United States Treasury and not from a HUD allocation. The HUD money has already been allocated, so we'll follow that lawsuit through the courts of, courts of law and see what happens. Um, and we keep you posted. Uh, further adding to the potential of, you know, refunding issues is that within the middle of this fiscal year, it doesn't have anything to do with us and it doesn't have anything to do with HUD, that there is an overall legislative piece in place based on the philosophy of sequestration. And that means that if a certain debt level is not reached in January of two thousand and thirteen, all programs are subject to another eight percent cut for the balance of the program year. So, I understand that the Senate, you know, I, I don't, the Senate is trying to work out a deal, well, that is avoided if the debt ceiling remains in place. Uh, I have no idea what actually will be taken, you know, in the House. You know, you can't really expect anything favorable come out of that body, so I would hope that maybe by December, we could give you an idea of what that means, but, you know, that could be, uh, a further reduction in funds. I mean, this housing authority, um, is in a position, you know, to withstand that type of activity, but, you know, if it continues, um, then things could be problematic. I don't know what housing authorities are gonna do going forward, particularly if they don't have an operating reserve. Um, but, uh, you can see, if you go to this chart right here, and you look at the amount of money that we get in terms of the overall housing authority money, and you go to, uh, let's see, uh, the public housing operating fund. Uh, in two thousand and eleven, the total amount of money was four point six billion dollars. Uh, in two thousand and twelve, or the current year, the allocation was three point nine billion dollars. Um, and the three point nine billion dollars did not cover, uh, all the program activity, hence, housing authorities with operating reserves will, or have kicked in their money to raise that to, uh, in effect, in totality, to four point nine billion dollars. Going forward to fiscal year thirteen, uh, the way it may stand now, if this sequestration is applied, the total amount of money that would be available for all housing authorities would be three point six billion dollars. And at that point, you start to get into a lot of trouble. The president's budget is proposed at four point five billion dollars of new money, which can run all the public housing authorities in the United States at a comfortable rate. So, we'll keep you posted on all of this. It's complicated, any questions?
I do.
Yeah, sure.
Um, in the engagement letter, there's a question that says, or the line that says that a few of you may have joined a lawsuit expecting the possibility of receiving damages, but do not pass the seventeen percent test, and would not be eligible for damages. Do we know, does that, does that apply to us?
No.
No?
No question.
Okay.
Any other questions on whether or not you guys are gonna have money next year to run the housing authority?
Do you have a second job?
Uh, yeah.
After the second job finish.
I have faith in this housing authority.
Yeah, that's good, I'm glad you do. Okay, then we're gonna do that, faith in a couple of other persons also. Uh, let's see what else we do. I guess the final, in spite of that somewhat gloomy funding picture, you can make things a little rosier as a commissioner by attending the next national conference, which is gonna be in San Diego, which is a nice place to visit. So, that conference is a Fatah conference, the Commissioners Conference, is done every year in, uh, January, it's always done in a nice warm climate. Uh, San Diego is the target this year, January thirteenth to the sixteenth, and Emily can enroll those who have an interest in attending. Okay? On the ED's report, um, let's see, what is new here? The lobby upgrades, the folly towers and Fort Leonard, we talked about this, this project is, you're gonna start seeing some work done there. Uh, we're gonna re-surface the parking lot, it's all the towers. Uh, some of the stuff Jose is gonna talk about, the Eport Arts Program, um, is starting this program, they always get a jump start in September, um, some, some work has to be done. Uh, the office is no longer gonna be on one fifty eighth first street, but we're gonna work out a rec center, and we're going to basically transition over to a community room down on Second Street, uh, which is being subject to some state rules and regulations which are taking place right now. Does anybody have any questions about what was in the report?
No questions?
No questions?
No business?
Uh, the other thing, um, I did have some questions about the website and that we're, we're gonna get that off.
Yeah, we're going to.
I know Christina previously asked, and I had some residents recently ask about going to the housing authority website to get information, and I told them we don't have one up yet.
Yeah, we're, we're here, yeah, and we just don't have it up yet, you know, I'm not, it's no excuse, we helped with it, we got a nice design. Uh, one of the things we were waiting for, there was, there was a lot of talk about a, um, uh, a state mandated, uh, you know, web, website content that was gonna be passed through legislation, but for some reason or another, that seems to be hung up. You know, I thought they were gonna actually pass it last year and clarify, and it was gonna be, you know, rules and what had to be posted, like, how much budget information had to be, it had to be released, but, you know, um, you know, the, we, we, it's, it's not running yet, we do have somebody working on it, we'll, we'll try to get to that in coming months. So, you know what? Not, not, not the shit to blame or anything, but, you know, this shit, we spent a lot of time, you know, doing things like the OIG audit, HUD OIG audit, which, uh, you know, is time consuming, it's been going on for a while, I don't, you know, I, I don't necessarily agree with what they're doing, so, but stuff like that takes a lot of time. It's not this, not just this housing authority, it's other cities and, and other housing authorities. So, you know, um, you know, we've done a lot of work with the website, but sometimes you just can't get to some of the important things, but if they're asking, and, you know, what prioritize that and see if they go right out very soon. We actually, actually have the domain name, and we did that part of it, you know, we got a very nice design, you know, some bells and whistles and drop down boxes and sound and all of that.
Even if we can just get a skeleton of our website up with basic, just basic information, you know, the housing authority's done a lot of great things throughout the years, you know, people can see, you know, some of what, you know, you, you guys have done over these years, really.
Offer them an expected time for any of those.
Uh, well, we could, uh...
And can we also, now that we're in the planning stages for that, um, make it bilingual or available in other languages?
Uh, the idea was to, um, have a conversion piece of software in it, you know, where, you know, it comes up in English, but you could heat stroke a conversion.
Yeah, the drop box, and you just choose, yeah, something like that.
That's definitely...
That's the, it can be easiest.
Yeah, and, and a town like Elizabeth, you always have to do that. So, so we're gonna do it. Um, you know, if you guys can keep OIG out of my hair, you know, which is a big time waste, maybe, 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 let's go for mid angle, I'm not gonna say the first to the mid angle, okay? Because it has to go all, but it has to be, well, you know that, it has to be tested and stuff like that.
New business.
All right, well, where did Jose go? He was treated?
I just wanted to bring up one thing before the day starts, and, and that's what led me to ask about the website is, and, and Bill and the executive director and deputy director are aware of this, I thought we might get some residents here tonight complaining because I have, uh, two families that live on the one hundred block of Washington Avenue that have been terrorizing, uh, the neighborhood, and they're on families that are on section eight. And there have been numerous complaints about these families to the police, um, noise complaints, disturbances, um, they've been threatening, uh, the neighbors, uh, recently, last month. They assaulted physically a neighbor over a parking spot, a public parking spot. Um, they've had friends, uh, that have given their address that were staying there, that were committing armed robberies in the neighborhood, things of that nature, and, and we've talked about it with, uh, executive director and director, and they've tried to, whatever they can, but, uh, we, we, we need to be able to do more with those families that are causing those kind of problems in our neighborhood. Uh, you know, they've reached out to me and they've asked about the website and gotten information, and I think they might have tried to reach out to Bill, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I haven't heard of anybody specifically over there, uh, you know, I think Ms. Ms. Hart can give you a factual update. I understand the problem. Uh, it's, it's, it's a difficult point of contention, uh, we have tried to engineer a couple of ways to remove at least one family, uh, you know, out of that building, but the bottom line, and I said it for the first time it came up, is that if the landlord does not move to evict the guy who owns tenant, then by law, I just can't go over there and tell the tenant, you know, you gotta go, you know? So, uh, you know, maybe kind of even say it's more landlord.
Yeah, well, even, even the landlord is scared of the tenant to the point where, well, one of them to the point where he has a two-family house, the first floor has been over a year that it has not been rented, because nobody will take the apartment.
Right.
Because of the family that lives on the second floor.
Right.
Um, so even the landlord is worried about evicting them and what repercussions there may be. So, I don't know, I mean...
Then, then, then he doesn't need to be a landlord. I mean, this is property, he pays for his property, he pays for the note, if you're gonna have, and he's, that's not the only, trust me, that's not the only unmoved tenant in a section eight, under a section eight voucher in the vicinity or, or the country, you know, but if the landlord is going to, you know, that's his position, that makes it harder for us to do it, and we're still trying to do it. Well, like, if we had a concerted effort on some of the things that we're trying to do, and if the people, you know, were in court, it'd be a different ballgame.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make the commissioners aware in case you get people coming here.
I mean, I haven't even, you know, I haven't even heard from the landlord, landlord's never personally called me. You have, I, and we've had a lot of discussion on it, but the landlord, you know, uh, did at least, you know, come in and, have you heard from the landlord?
No. But I, and...
But Anthony's had a lot of conversations with the landlord.
Right, the, um... I will say to you, this is, not that this has never happened, it happens on occasion, very rare occasion, uh, and it is a very lengthy process, uh, because if the landlord is feeling intimidated, then they're not too quick to evict just because they're afraid for their lives or the, the lives of their family. Um, and i-if they're not giving us the information, showing us police reports, things like that, if the other neighbors aren't giving us information showing that the tenants aren't abiding by the terms of the lease, then we have no grounds for termination. If we find that there are grounds for termination, we terminate the assistance, but that doesn't mean the problem goes away, because the landlord will still have to evict the family from the house.
That's right.
Because they can still reside in the house, it's still ultimately result, the, the problem resides with the landlord to get that tenant out of the apartment. So, uh, it's a very tricky situation, and unfortunately, the families that are involved there are very volatile.
Yeah, they're two, they're relatives, and they're moving to the same neighborhood, and, uh...
I mean, if I had my way, you know, they would come in and I would sit them down, and I'd say, you, you know, you people gotta be, you can't be serious, you know? Because, and what they do is, they make it look like, I know, because Anthony's talked to him, they make it look like there are people being attacked. And I haven't, and you know, but, but...
Yeah, they turn it around, make it seem like they're the victims.
And Kathy and, and Anthony say, you, you can't go in there, you know, because it's very aggravating, and he said, you can't go in there and tell those damn people, you know, what's going on. I, I hadn't, I had no right to do that. That could actually make things worse, that could, they could, they could, they could be suing us, and it could be a nightmare, I, I, so, and it's, I, I, trust me, we feel it, sooner or later, we'll get something going, but, you know, it's, it's just not an easy process, um...
Yeah, I don't like that.
And, and if he would, and if, and if, he would have, that tenant would have been in court now and would have been evicted, and probably would have lost her section eight assistance, whereas the only op, the only option that I have now probably is to , you know, keep them to another unit.
Right.
Which doesn't, doesn't resolve the city, uh, just, just doesn't resolve the problem, you know, overall, so... Stay tuned, you know?
It's just unfortunate, because there's been fifteen to twenty reports to the police, and unfortunately, that isn't enough to...
And they haven't been arrested?
Uh, no, no, they haven't been arrested.
They're just, um...
They're just very elusive, they've been, you know, they threaten, and...
Right.
And even in that assault, they were gone by the time the police got there, and then...
Nobody wants to come forward.
No.
So, but I just wanted to make the board aware.
What can you do?
Are there any children involved? Minors and minors?
No, they're all adults now, actually.
I mean, if we look at maybe, we thought...
And we talked about it with several months, we've been talking about it.
Maybe it was a minor, there was somebody we thought who had a record and maybe a problem, but that person was a minor. Yeah, and these people know what they're doing, they, they, they know, they know how to really play the system out. Sooner or later, it'll, it'll all come, come down on them, but right now, yeah, it's, it's, it's a problem, but if somebody wants to come and talk about it, they're welcome to do that, but again, like I said, I had not, I had no idea who the landlord was, what his name is, I have, he's not called, I, I haven't, I haven't got a telephone call.
And if the landlord is in receipt of the complaints of the police reports from the other neighbors, or Nelson, if you are, then we need to get our, those reports into our possession, because then that is a, a tool for us to use, a resource for the housing authority to use.
I gave the only one report of the assault of the neighbor to, I, I gave that...
But they don't know whether that was somebody that actually lives in the apartment, or...
Yeah, their names are on there.
The names are on there?
On there, yeah.
And are they people that are part of the lease, or just people?
Oh, that I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But it certainly was the, uh, the, the mother, one of the moms, named in the complaint, and two of her kids, which are adults.
Okay.
It's been...
Yeah, no, it's not easy, it's been frustrating, you know, uh, because they've been in contact with me, and, and I've been, we have talked about it.
Yeah.
You know, for a couple of months already, and it's just, it's amazing.
Well, I mean, there has to be like some sort of law in place to protect also landlords from unruly tenants, and maybe perhaps that would be a peace, you know?
Well, what happens is, is that, I mean, you, you, I don't wanna say to, I don't wanna say, say the landlord, landlord could actually take out a restraining order on the tenants as well as, as, you know, moving for eviction, uh, as well as whatever may be available that the prosecutor may, may, may offer, but the landlord has to move, I can't move, put those actions on behalf of the landlord, the landlord's gotta actually, landlord's actually gotta make his move, you know, so...
Yeah, I've been talking with the owner, and, you know, hopefully, he'll be moving in that direction, trying to encourage him to do that, but he's worried they're gonna destroy his, uh, house even more.
And they might.
And they might.
They might go after him.
You know?
Yeah.
And he lives nearby as well.
And that's what may very well happen, so...
Yeah, so, it's very real, uh...
It's the worst case, I mean, this is happening, they'll, they'll put, put holes in a wall and, and fix cars in your backyard, but this is the worst case scenario, these people are, are actually terrorizing their neighborhood.
I mean, we usually offer them to put up the neighborhood watch, the block watch signs in their windows, none of them would put it up, they said, put it up on the poles, on the metal poles, because we don't wanna put it up on the window to cause problems, you know, so...
Because as long as they stay like that, it's, the problem's gonna stay there.
Well, you know, these things, people don't, people was, you know, they murdering people.
Yeah, they don't know what they're, you know, capable of, that a threat is a law enough, so...
Well, I guess we'll have to tell them about that another day, they won't want it.
Hope they do something, come up, step up and do something.
Just, there been communication with the police department?
Oh, yeah.
They can't, they can't come up with, they can't come up with a solution, of course.
Like, I, I got a meeting with the police.
They have to be caught when they act.
Yeah, well, you know what, let me, I got a meeting with the police director prior to, let me, let me see if we can get Nelson all over there. I haven't talked to him about it yet, so I'm looking for a, a topic for discussion. Okay. You ready for me?
So, let's talk about the future. So, uh, the housing authority has been working on our next development project.
Can I?
Sure.
What'd you do?
All you have to do is say a few words.
Yeah, that's good, cause then you go back in your own.
That's power.
I'm gonna man a few words.
Okay, we just wanna see if you could hold it.
Do, do I still have the job? So, it's, uh, we refer, we refer to it as Eport Homes, it is, uh, a total of fifty-two units of new housing. Uh, it's, uh, on three different sites in the Eport area, two of the sites are on Third Street, and one site is on First Street. Uh, the two sites on Third Street are really targeting an area of Third Street that really needs redevelopment, uh, probably it's, it's in one of the most, uh, blighted areas within, that are left within the ne, the neighborhood, uh, and it's within a block, block or two blocks from Westport Homes, which is part of a hope six redevelopment, uh, uh, project. Uh, we refer to it as a scattered site, uh, and it is a family development project, it's not a senior housing. So, what I would like to do is, we'd like to go over it. This is thirty-six units. Uh, and it will be a one fifty-eight, one sixty-eight First Street. We presently own one fifty-eight First Street, as you recall, that's where we operate our community supportive services. And that's where Rita Vega, uh, was at. We are relocating the services and the computer lab program from First Street to our community center in Second Street. So, really, we're not sacrificing any, actually, we're making it better. So, we are demolishing one fifty-eight First Street. We have acquired the empty site where the old furniture store was at or the warehouse that burned down to the ground. And the corner property that is presently a bar. Uh, so we're consolidating the site and we are developing this beautiful building. Uh, thirty-six units, again, it's, it's gonna be a family, family project. I just wanna go over the specifics. The ground floor will, will, will have the lobby, the community room, laundry room, the electrical rooms, uh, the maintenance room. Essentially, it's gonna be common space and space that will be used for, uh, the, uh, management of the building and the parking. Uh, it's gonna be a total of thirty-one parking space, including off-street parking for thirty-two, uh, thirty-six units. Uh, so this is the ground floor. This is gonna be, uh, a real interesting design because the second floor, as you can see, uh, the second floor, the building actually expands and we have a deck of the second floor. So, a portion of the parking lot is gonna be under, uh, covered. So, that will add an additional amenity to the tenants. Uh, the apartments from this floor will have access to the plaza. So, what we're trying to do here is, in terms of design, and the housing authority always tries to do new things. What we're trying to do is, in urban area, with limited amount of space, achieve adequate parking, provide good size of living space for the tenants while at the same time creating open space. So, we achieved the three basic desires that are a challenge in urban areas because it's limited amount of space. So, uh, this design really was the result of a team effort from, that involves the architect, housing authority staff, our consultants, et cetera. So, there wanna be one-bedroom apartments and two-bedroom apartments. Uh, elevator. This is the second floor.
The standard?
Yes. This is the third floor also. Well, it's a replica, sorry, it's a replica of the second floor, except that we no longer have the plaza. Uh, if it is possible, if it is possible, we will have in these units balconies overlooking the plaza and, and the neighborhood, if it is possible. Uh, and we're gonna talk about the financing because this is a total different deal than the days of Hope Six and even two oh five First Street. So, this is the third floor and the fourth floor, and this is the elevations, which you saw rendering. As you can see, this is the side of the building with extension, with a plaza and, uh, the entrance to the parking, the parking lot. So, this is one project on First Street, the second project. Two hundred and two oh six Third Street. Both projects on Third Street are in the same block, okay? So, this is one corner, two hundred and two oh six Third Street. Uh, it's a ten-unit, uh, building with elevator. Uh, one of the things that we are also doing in this project is that we have fifteen percent of the units are gonna be ADA. Uh, and they're gonna be also targeted for homeless. Uh, we would like to also to target to some, uh, veterans as well. Uh, so it's, as you know, it's only required, the requirement is, I believe, it's only five percent. Here, we're going up to fifteen, fifteen percent of the units. So, all three sites are a hundred percent ADA, uh, handicap accessible. They all have elevators. Uh, but essentially, it's ten units of housing. It's in a corner property and on this project, we have two bedrooms and three bedrooms. We have one studio. Which probably might be available for like a, a property manager type of, uh, we have, uh, two bedrooms in the second, third and fourth floor, and we also have three bedrooms, uh, one in each floor as well. Uh, this is the studio on the ground floor with the parking, which the access to the parking is from the side. Right here, the ground floor. And the second and, and third and fourth floor esent, essentially the same. We have the three bedrooms here in this area. This is the green, two bedrooms and two bedrooms with the elevators and, uh, here. Okay? So, this is the second development. The third development is this baby right here. This is in the other, the other corner. So, essentially, it's gonna be this building. But instead of having four floors, it's, it's gonna be three floors only. And in the corner of Third Street, which is this area right here, we're gonna have an open space, which is gonna be like a community, we're gonna show, it's gonna be a community garden or, uh, a place where, uh, people can, it's gonna be an open space for the community. Uh, this is this corner right here. And then we have, again, the three bedrooms and two bedrooms. So, we are building three bedrooms, we are building two bedrooms, uh, we are building one bedrooms, we're combining, again, trying to, uh, to, uh, respond to the needs of, of the community.
Jose, of each of the sites, can you tell the commissioners what, um, like, how many twos and threes are in that big building versus the, the two other smaller ones?
Here we have a total of six units. Uh, four units are gonna be two bedrooms and two units are gonna be three bedrooms. On this room here, I have to apologize, but I don't know all this, uh.
So, no, I, I.
Here we have ten, ten units, one studio, we have one, two, three, three bedrooms, four, six, six, uh, two bedrooms. So.
We've changed them a couple of times, that's why, yeah.
And who knows, we might still.
Still change.
Change. And in the.
But we tried to put a good mix.
And in the building. I need a bigger ceiling. And here, there are essentially two bedrooms, two bedroom and one bedroom. Uh, right now, we have, uh, planning board approval. This is gonna be a five-story building. So, we also have to go to the board of adjustment. It will be the tallest building in the Eport area. It's gonna be a five-story building, so we also had to go to the board of adjustment. Uh, our board attorney, he was very creative and we were able to, to get approval. Uh, right now, we are in the process of still securing funds for the project. Uh, and at this point, I would like to share this little chart with the commissioners. This particular project, uh, essentially, we are trying, it's having, uh, forty and fifty percent of median income. We will have some, uh, section eight vouchers also that are gonna be project-based, uh, to be able to provide housing opportunities for the, the special needs. Uh, but essentially, we are targeting forty, fifty percent of median income. The chart that you have in front of you is the two basic financial, uh, development strategies that exist right now for the development of affordable housing, low-income housing. Either you do a project with a nine percent low-income housing tax credit, or you do it with a four percent low-income housing tax credit. It's the only way to do it. There's nothing else. Okay? Uh, the nine percent, if you look at the first column, that's the nine percent. That's it, pretty much what we use when we develop, we develop Pioneer Homes and My Glory Matter. As you see it, the equity, the nine percent is almost eighty percent of the total financing. The other portion is debt or grants, loans, all the types of subsidy, like, uh, home funds, housing authority money, whether it's program income, whether it's R H F, uh, anything else covers that percentage. And then the rest is covered by deferred developer fee. The deferred developer fees are fees that the developer is entitled to, but defers a percentage in order to make up for the gap. This is the nine percent deal. This is the most attractive type of financing, but it's the most competitive one. It's extremely competitive to get one of these things right now. The city of, uh, Elizabeth was lucky enough to get two last year. One for Oakwood and the other one for Brand New Day. When we were putting this deal together, I knew that it was not the time, it was not our moment, because we would have been competing either with Brand New Day or Oakwood Plaza. And we had the opportunity, since we were eligible for N S P funds, which was a total of one point six million dollars, to use the other type of financing, which is the four percent. In the four percent deal, first of all, you don't get four percent, what you get is three points, uh, less than, uh, three sixteenths is what you get from your equity. And as you can see, the equity is only about maybe thirty, twenty, eh, thirty percent, less than fifty percent than your nine percent. That means that you have to look for the rest of the money. You have to look for the rest of the money somewhere, somewhere else. The bond is the loans. Because now, in this particular project, you do have a mortgage. You have a bond that has to be paid, like any other regular mortgage. That means that the project has to generate income in order to pay for this loan. Otherwise, there's no deal. No one will write, no bank, no one will, will, will provide you with the funds for this type of development. And besides that, you still need additional soft money, which is grants, in this case, N S P funds, uh, home funds. In this deal, we have one point six million dollars of N S P secured. We have approximately the six, eh, six hundred thousand of, uh, ho, of home funds that is secured and we have applied for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Federal Home Loan Bank. You combine those dollars and now we have enough funds with the debt and the equity to build this project. But that's the reason why we cannot really combine these funds with housing authority money, uh, public housing funds or R H F funds, because it's just not gonna work. First of all, those units cannot carry debt. It's, it, it, it's just gonna be done. So, this is the formula that we're using for the financing of this project. Now, still, since we do have an obligation to provide, uh, housing for the low-income families, in this case, will be the special needs, that's where we are putting our section eight vouchers to, uh, help that segment of the population. I just wanna take a minute just to explain the financing and why this is different to, uh, to, you know, the days of Hope Six and even two oh five First Street. Uh, it's a total different, uh, project. Because of the fact that here, the pressure is in the developer to look for the money, the four percent tax credit is always available. You can essentially knock on their door, say, you have a project with the, 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 the subsidy, uh, commitment, uh, and, and it's a project that is eligible, there's no problem. You, you get a four percent allocation on the bond. Whereas the nine percent credit, you have to spend at least a hundred fifty thousand dollars just to do your application and you have to compete with everyone else in New Jersey. That's all, that's the difference. Any questions?
Did you, did you talk about who did the development entity?
Us. We are the developer entity. This is our second development project as a housing authority through a general partnership, uh, Eport Homes is the general partner on this deal. And the housing, and the general partner, housing authority will be entitled to developer's fee.
Was how many units? Did you say one fifty-eight, one sixty-eight, what had?
In total, it's fifty-two units.
Fifty-two, right, altogether.
Altogether. Thirty-six units, thirty-six unit and one fifty-eight, ten units in two hundred. And the other one, it would be six units.
Third Street.
Right. There will be, uh, sixteen units on Third Street and thirty-two, thirty-six in, uh.
Thirty-six, ten.
Yeah, sixteen, sixteen and thirty-six. Sixteen on Third Street and thirty-six on First, for a total of fifty-two.
Will it just say the project can start?
Well, we do have a very aggressive, aggressive schedule, but, uh, at the same time, we, we're still yeah, in the process to secure financing. As I just mentioned, we submitted the, the application for the Federal Home Loan Bank. We should hear from them by December. That's when we were told. We submitted a very competitive application. Ours was very competitive. Uh, the application was submitted in San Francisco. Uh, that's where we, we receive funding for two oh five First Streets, so they, they know us. Uh, so we're still trying to secure funds, but to answer your question, we do need to start construction. Never mind closing. We have to break ground by January of two thousand and thirteen. So, that's.
Until how long?
Yeah, the rope, the rope is in.
How long does a project like this take to?
A year.
One year altogether?
Yeah, about a year, a year and a half.
From the time you put the first shovel in the ground?
Actually, half, yeah. Year, year, year and a half at most. I believe, we, we're trying to beat the job separate, so there might be two different contractors.
That's what I was gonna ask you, should you plan on doing everything at the same time or?
Yeah, no, everything is gonna be done simultaneously. The six unit, I mean, the six unit building, that should not be a problem because there's nothing, there's no demolition there. The ten-unit building, what you have is a one-story warehouse that the roof's already caved in, so it's only the, 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 the shelf. So, to demolish that building, it shouldn't be that, I mean, it's not a complicated, it's no relocation, there's, there's nothing, just, it should be done pretty fast. And on, on the side of First Street, we have, we do have some demolition, but most of the site is already empty. And we really do not have all the environmental, uh, uh, assessments were conducted. We really do not have any major problems there, none whatsoever.
Third Street, what is that building that, where is it located? Magnolia and, Magnolia and Bond or the, the site on Third Street?
One is on Bond, on Bond and, uh, and Third. And the other one is Magnolia and Third, I think.
The old supermarket?
No, Core, Core is, Core is the one on Third Street. I mean, I'm sorry, on First Street. Core is on First Street.
Right.
On Third Street, I believe it's Magnolia.
Is that between?
Yeah, Magnolia, right. This one is, this one is Magnolia and Third, which is the. The ten unit.
Oh, it's the ten unit one?
Ten unit one. And this one is Bond and Third Street. And this is the six unit.
They're both on the same side of the street. One is where the old supermarket used to be.
Is that, is that what used to be there?
Yeah.
Is that what it was?
That used to be C Haber.
Right.
On the corner.
And then the empty lot.
Empty lot, where the bar used to be.
I know that probably once these beautiful buildings get built, people are gonna say, how come you didn't do the building in the middle? I hope that you understand why. This is the reason why.
Is there a Plan B in place in case you don't get to secure those funds? I mean, I don't wanna be Debbie Downer here, but you just said it's very competitive.
No, this is.
No, 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 this one is not.
But it's the one after the four percent.
The four percent.
Four percent?
No, but there is, there is some, but there is competition with, with, you know, we're still waiting for Federal Home Loan Bank, that's seventy fifty thousand dollars. That we do need it. What happens if we don't get it?
You don't wanna think, go there, huh?
I mean, I think it's always a good.
Thank you, thank you. We look for some, I don't know, we sell some cupcakes or something, I don't know.
Okay, count me in.
One question, is that gonna be our trade market?
You know, they have this as a surrender and this has not been approved. To be honest with you, this has not been, been approved. To answer your question, if we don't get all the money, then we have to do some value engineering. Value engineering, well, we knocked it down. We, we looked at the building. We, we probably put less, less brick. You know, we, we take down the, the yard, we take down the balcony, we make it work. We already did this. This building, all of them, was supposed to be bigger. But you know what? I was two million dollars. over budget, so you know what we did? I decide, we decided not to chop anything. All that we did, we shrunk the building, we make them smaller. That's it. We just make them smaller, and that's how we made it happen. But we still came.
Unit size is still...
No, they were huge, we had units of thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred square feet. A two-bedroom, that's huge.
We were a little, our eyes were a little bigger than what they needed to be, so we just shrunk them back down to... They're still very good size.
No, they're, they're still very good size. Because, so the fact that all these units, quite frankly, I mean, are at a fifty percent median income, these units will be competing with the, with, with the private market, more or less. So we do have to provide amenities to attract people with incomes that may want to move here. So, these units really are meant to be for the working, working poor, people that are, you know, that are forty and fifty percent of median income. It's working poor.
What's, what's that number, forty percent of median income?
Thirty-five, I think, I was looking at, I think it's thirty-five. Thirty-five, it depends on the size of the family.
That's like a family of four, I'd say.
Yeah. Fifty percent, let's say a fifty percent, uh... Twenty-nine thousand if I'm reading this correctly. We have twenty-five, thirty-five thousand dollars, it depends on the size of the family. So we're dealing with low-income, low-income families still, but these are, are, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred, uh, a thousand dollar rents, that's pretty much what the market now is in, in, in the neighborhood. So you have to provide amenities to attract people into your building. And, and you need those rents in order, as I mentioned before, to be able to generate the funds to carry the mortgage, carry the debt, debt service. So, if everything goes well, I shall see you all at the groundbreaking ceremony in January, and if it gets too cold, then...
Indoors.
We're doing indoors. We have done that in the past. Is there any other questions? Just good luck, thank you.
Good luck, and it's, they're all beautiful.
Track record, it's gonna be a success.
Yeah, we, we certainly, we are very, we are very, uh, eh... I mean, this is gonna be a wonderful building, it's a whole new design for urban areas, because we are really doing, providing parking, we are providing adequate living space and open space as well. So you're doing in a very congested urban areas, achieving, just by adding another floor. Okay? Yes. The what? This belongs to my architect.
Thank you, Jose.
I just wanna say, you mentioned on the family success center, the ribbon curtain that went great.
Yeah, for all the people, uh, I think it was last, it was last Thursday, four Thursdays ago.
Last Thursday.
Yeah, two Thursdays ago, we got a grant, um, the, uh, that's your thing, good.
Oh, everybody, I, I, I think everybody knows, we got the grant with the state, uh, with Prevention Links to do a collaborative effort to open up a family success center. And last Thursday was the grand opening, and we had a huge turnout of people and families and food and a lot of dignitaries, so it was, uh, well-attended and, uh, this week. Actually, it was two weeks ago, you're right, Bill, last week, it was kind of a lull. This week, we're...
Fourth, I think.
Yeah, we're meeting with the, uh, the, uh, leadership, and we're gonna start to begin to set up some of the programs. So, but they've already started, they've met with the residents, and, um, we actually have a tenant meeting on Thursday night, and we're gonna begin reinforcing some of the programs, the lightened skills training and the family programs that will be going on there, so, um, it's onward and upward, it's all, all good. So, tenants are excited and the staff is excited and, um, the agency that's there is, is, they're excellent. They're very cooperative and open door policy, so it should be good.
It was, it was a great day, I mean, I was excited, I was there, I was able to attend, and, uh, you know, thanks to the Housing Authority, Prevention Links, and the Tenant Association also, Seminole Manor, without their cooperation, certain of them wouldn't have been possible. You know, um, they have that there now, and, uh, looking forward to, you know, a brighter future for all the residents at Seminole Manor.
Place looks good, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah, looks very nice. So, we're moving on to our resolutions. Resolution number nine, amending resolution fifty-five thirty-five, for contract number oh-nine C dash fourteen, A and E construction phase services for heat and hot water systems at Seminole Manor. This is an increase of a con- existing contract with an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars to be completed in two hundred and ten thousand days. What this will actually do is extend the A and E services as well as provide additional construction phase services to complete the upgrade of the heat and hot water systems at Seminole Manor. I think two-thirds of the buildings have already been, you know, fitted with the brand-new, uh, heat and hot water system. We had to locate the money to, to finance the project, so this, this continues the, the, uh, the same architecture we did work on the First Street project.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, we need this, and it's great, but this is the second change order that we've had on this. You know, we started out at a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars that it was bid, and now it's, uh, you know, more than, like, sixty-three thousand dollars additional on top of what they bid it, so... I'm just concerned that, you know, somehow keeps increasing, you know, when they bid it low.
Well, he didn't exactly bid low, it was, it was set up there. We, we really wanted to do the entire complex, you know, and we didn't want to, uh, but we didn't have the money, we used, we did get some arrow money from Obama's, President Obama's stimulus program. And there, 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 there was a change in substance for the twenty-seven thousand, but the thirty, thirty-five is, uh, is basically allows to complete the project.
No, I know, I mean, it's needed, and, you know, my only concern is that, is, you know... It's almost sixty-three thousand dollars more from where we started, which is, you know... I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Number ten, authorizing executive directive permission to sell a used nineteen ninety-eight Dodge pickup truck. We were going to, uh, we were going to salvage this vehicle, uh, but, but instead, we're going to sell it at a nominal price, one dollar, to the Two Oh Five First Street project and owner. We had it checked out, it's a low-mileage pickup truck, and that owner, which is the Two Oh Five First Street building, is gonna have to do the repairs for five to seven thousand dollars, and they'll save money as a bonus to buying the pickup truck. So we're gonna actually transfer the ownership of this pickup truck over to Two Oh Five First Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, authorizing ED to purchase a Ford Explorer vehicle, uh, this is actually a replacement vehicle. This is the vehicle that is a, uh, all-wheel-drive vehicle that was available on state contract for purchase. Requires board resolution because the purchase price is over seventeen thousand five hundred. Unfortunately, the places of vehicle was totaled out, uh, because of an accident, uh, back in April of this year. You know, we did get full, full reimbursement from the insurance company when we did this vehicle. Unless the driver, the actual, is a...
See driver?
All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, number twelve took a while to get at, uh, but it ratifies a contract between Hason Unicross and number eight, which is a lot of more administrative people. This contract is actually a bunch of retro back to July first, two thousand and eleven, carrying over to June thirty, two thousand and thirteen. The terms mirror the, uh, what was stipulated with the other contracts, and it, um, I think that increases two point two five for two, two one-year periods, and there is a, uh, there is a, a new, um, calculation on sick time. There'll be less sick time granted, prior amount was fifteen days. It's down to ten days, and there's a new schedule for vacation days, which is, in some of the projects, there is a little less. But, in order to keep pace, you know, with our benefit programs, and in order to be able to book, you know, approved and unused vacations and sick time, we finally were necessary, uh, to reduce, uh, the amount of vacation time that's really available, so... We haven't agreed, and all we need now is a resolution from the board.
That makes sense.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
You got a motion, you need to join?
Second.
All in favor?